Welcome, everyone, to this November regularly scheduled Midland Public School Board meeting. If you would all kindly turn off your cell phones so they don't interfere with our TV feed, I would appreciate it. And at this time, if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Lynn, if you would do roll call, please.
Sure. President Wasserman is absent. Vice President Branstad.
Here.
Secretary Baker here. Treasurer Singer.
Here.
Member Frazee.
Here.
Member Gordon.
Here.
And Member McCarth.
Here.
All right, six out of seven. Next up is our consent agenda. We have approval of meeting minutes from October 19th. Following staff members have announced their resignations, effective to the dates noted. Bids have been accepted and tabulation is provided for bid package for demolition of parts of Central Middle School. Approval of the payment of the school system's bills for October and legal invoice payments. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve items in the consent agenda, items 2.1 through 2.5.
Second.
All right, moved by Pam, supported by Patrick. Is there any discussion?
No.
All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving into the next Board of Education Matters presentation to the board. Do you want to?
We're very excited, I think, about our first presentation. Every time Barbara comes and presents, seems like we have lots of kids, so we're excited about having them. Might have been the most impressive pledge allegiance we've ever had, as well with those kids here. That was kind of nice to see. So I'll let Mr. Lauer introduce everyone and we'll move forward.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for inviting us to share our Carpenter Leadership Programs with you this evening. Last year, there were several leadership groups at Carpenter Street School. We had a traditional student council made up of fifth grade students and a community student leadership group made up of first through fifth grade students. Additionally, we provided our second year of the project-based learning summer camp. This evening, we have brought the teacher advisors of these groups, as well as some of the participating students, to share with you how these programs have been implemented within our school.
My name is Jen Service and I am the PYP Coordinator at Carpenter Street School. As you know, Midland Public Schools is implementing the Primary Years Program in our elementary buildings. Last year, Carpenter Street School was in the consideration phase of the program. Our school-wide focus was the implementation of the learner profile attributes and attitudes into our school community. The learner profile is truly the heart of the PYP. It is who we want the students to become. The attitudes in the PYP are how they will get there. I would like to introduce you to second graders Zachary Kineth and third grader Kathryn Potts. They are going to share part of their PYP journey with you.
Hi, my name is Zachary. The PYP has taught me many things. I have learned to be more caring about each other, our school, and our community. We have learned about becoming risk takers. Every day, we are risk takers when we share our thoughts and ideas with others. We are also respectful of others' thoughts and ideas. We are learning to be good communicators. One thing that we practice is our nonverbal communication. Our body language can send many messages to others. We need to be sure we are sharing positive messages.
The PYP has taught me to be principled. I have learned to stop and think before I speak and act. My words and actions affect others. It is important that we are careful not to hurt other people's feelings. We have learned to be more confident. It takes confidence to be a risk taker and share ideas with each other. We are enquirers and ask a lot of questions. We have a place in the classroom that we can put all of our questions about things we wonder about. We have learned that we need to ask questions to find things out.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Solway and I am the Teacher Leader for our Project-Based Learning Program, or PBL. For the last two summers, we've invited students to participate in our PBL Summer Camp. At the camp, we give students a driving question and then students take the lead in their learning by creating an action plan based on this driving question. So I'm now going to introduce two fourth grade students, Samantha Binkley and McKenna Wheel, to share their experiences.
Hi, my name is Samantha. I attended the PBL camp this past summer. On the first day of PBL camp, the teachers gave us a driving question. This year, our driving question was, what makes a hero? As a PBL group, we brainstormed ideas about heroes. My idea of a hero is someone that takes care of animals. My group decided to go to the Humane Society because that is a place that takes care of animals. On our visit, they showed us around. They showed us where they take dogs for walks and they showed us where they keep the medicine for the animals. We got to hold some of the kittens. We asked a lot of questions while we were there and learned that the Humane Society needs money for medicine and blankets to keep the baby animals warm. We decided to take action. We took photos while we were on our visit. We made a poster to share with the community about the needs of the Humane Society. On the last day of camp, we held an expedition and shared projects with our parents, community members, and MPS administration. We shared our poster and needs of the Humane Society. We added donation jar at our display and in that short time, we raised $7. We donated that money and a blanket that my grandma made to the Humane Society. We received a letter from Evie from the Humane Society. She told us that she appreciated our help and she was happy that we got donations for them. This is one small way that we took action and we were able to help our community.
Hi, my name is McKenna and I attended the PBL camp in August of 2014. Our driving question had to do with promoting healthy living to the Carpenter families in the Midland community. My group decided to make snacks with healthy ingredients called granola balls. We decided to share our healthy snack with the residents of Riverside because we thought that they might like to see and visit with younger kids. We made the snacks at school and walked over to Riverside to deliver them. We shared our granola bars with the residents. We ate and talked together. We shared our recipe with them in hopes that they would make them again on our own. We also gave the residents toothbrushes. While they were there, we got to help with the parachute exercise class. It made me feel good that we did something nice for people that don't get many visitors. With this small action, we hope to brighten their day and share the message of healthy living.
Another leadership program that we have at Carpenter Street School is Student Council. Our Student Council group is comprised of fifth grade students. The Student Council is the governing body of our school. Here to share with you about our Student Council are fifth graders Ben Root and Sidney Cluff.
Hi, I'm Ben. I am proud to be a member of the Student Council at Carpenter Street School. Fifth grade teachers select Student Council members after receiving input from students' previous teachers. The teachers look for students that are principled, caring, responsible, and good communicators to lead our school. I was a member of the Community Student Leader Group last year. I think that helped me develop leadership skills. I am good at figuring things out. I am a good communicator and can share our Student Council ideas with the Everyday Heroes Group. I'm respectful and listen to the ideas of others. I am working to make our school a great place. I would like to share with you some of the things that Student Council does at our school. We organize all the school spirit days. This is a way to show that our school is a team and we support each other. Student Council polls each class to see how many students participate on each spirit day. Some of the spirit days we have planned this year are Sports Day, Pyjama Day, Beach Day, and Hat Day.
Hi, my name is Sidney. I was also a Community Student Leader last year and I am now so excited to be a member of the Student Council. We also organize spirit wear sales for our school. We promote and communicate our school activities on the morning announcements. We also make posters and visit classrooms to keep everyone informed. We will be walking in the Santa Parade next Saturday to show our school spirit. This year, we decided to take our efforts a step further. A big part of PYP and PBL is taking action. We wanted to take action at our school to help our community. As a Student Council team, we brainstormed ways that we could help our community. Our first idea was a food drive. We recognized that there are many people right here in our community that need our help. We presented our idea to the Everyday Heroes Group and they agreed that this was a good way to, that we could take action, help out. We are currently running a food drive at our school. We are collecting non-perishable items and personal care items for our community. We hope that this small action will make a big impact, especially as we approach the holiday season. If you are interested in donating, please stop by Carpenter Street School and drop off your donation. Our drive runs through Wednesday. As of today, we have 1,000 items.
Wow. Amazing.
My name is Barbara Jacques and I'm the music teacher at the school and also one of the advisors of these groups. McKenna Wheel and I will tell you about the Community Student Leaders and Everyday Heroes. McKenna, will you get us started?
Hi, my name is McKenna. Last year, I was Community Student Leader. We explored and studied the PYP learner profile attributes and attitudes and served as school ambassadors by sharing meeting reports school-wide. I was also one of eight Carpenter Community Student Leaders who participated in a community event titled Emerging Leaders. We presented vision speeches, which included a community action idea. My action idea was, I have seen a bunch of trash around and I think we should go around and look in parks for recycling garbage and recycle it so our community is clean and not polluted.
This year, Everyday Heroes evolved from the shared designs of Community Student Leaders, Primary Years Program, and Project-Based Learning. We understand the learner profile attributes and attitudes and are now ready to live them, united in action. Our Student Council and Everyday Heroes Groups are connected. We meet both separately and together, working toward common goals. Our Student Council members identify community needs, which are then brought to the Everyday Heroes for team action.
As you can see, we are working together to make our school a better place. Together, the Primary Years Program, Project-Based Learning, and Everyday Heroes and Student Council help us practice ways to be a friend, a scholar, and a role model. These programs have taught us to not only care about our community, but also the world around us. When we got together as a group at the beginning of the year, the teacher asked us, why do we care about all this? Our response was, now we see things. We reflect as a group and we decide together how we can make a change. If we don't take action, we can't make a change. We are changing our school and our community for the better. Think about how you could help. Thank you for having us this evening.
And thank you for caring.
Does anyone have any comments, questions?
You guys are awesome. Listening to all these different groups that you have going on at Carpenter makes me excited about our future and these leaders. And so many times, we have a few leaders, but with all the programs you shared tonight, it just is exciting to see that so many kids are developing great skills and you guys are amazing. Thank you.
How many of you were scared to get up there and talk? Raise your hand. I couldn't tell. You guys were phenomenal. You guys are great public speakers. I couldn't tell anybody was scared. That was fantastic. And did you know that all of the people and all of the organizations that you help, through your action ideas and through your different project-based learning projects, those people look at you as heroes? And so do we. So thank you very much.
I think you demonstrated here tonight that you, at your very young ages, are thinking about some very adult things. And I'm really excited about when you guys get to be adults. You're just going to keep going, I can tell. I think you're going to do amazing things. You already are. Thank you for coming here tonight and telling us all the things you're doing.
And I would add, you are doing amazing things. And just think, you're young, you're only in elementary school. I can't wait to see what you do in middle school and high school and then when you're adults. So thank you, Zachary and Kathryn, Samantha McKenna, and Ben and Sidney, and all your teachers. I can't wait. I'm going to come over to Carpenter's before Wednesday and I'm going to make a donation to your special cause. You've worked very hard. Thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Fabulous job.
Well, I don't know if I can public speak while they are, but I'm going to give it a try here. Our first Shining Star of the Month is going to be Laura Wallanen. If Laura would come up. Let me read a little bit about Laura. It is always exciting for us to have an MPS graduate return as a dedicated educator. Laura Wallanen is just such an MPS staff member. She was a Justin Hill Chipmunk, a Northeast Viking, and a 2002 Midland High Chemics Honor Graduate. Ms. Laura Wallanen earned her Bachelor's of Science degree in Special Education, graduating summa cum laude from Western Michigan University in 2007. She is currently completing her Master's Degree in Reading from Concordia University. Before coming to Midland, Ms. Wallanen taught in Special Education Department of the Green Bay Area Public School District in Wisconsin for six years. Laura's Midland Public Schools teaching career began as a special education teacher in a shared position between Carpenter Street School and Adams Elementary in 2013. For the 2014-15 school year, Laura was the Behavior Resource Room teacher at Carpenter Street School, only the position she holds today. Supervisors of Ms. Wallanen have commented Laura looks for the opportunities to develop the strengths of each child she works with. She takes extra time to build learning opportunities for all students and increases outcomes for all. Laura continues to grow and find unique and effective ways in which to engage students and promote positive behavior. Laura was nominated for the Shining Star Award by an MPS colleague. Here are some of her comments. Laura's work in her Behavior Resource Room and spends countless hours making sure her students have the best possible experience they can. She has an outstanding relationship with the parents of her students and continues to work hard, day in and day out. She maintains a positive attitude and is an outstanding coworker. She absolutely deserves to be named Shining Star for all of her hard work and dedication. Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you.
And you can throw around, shake all the berets.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you so much.
And our second shining star is Mary Shilton. Mary would come up. Let me read a little bit about Mary. Mary began her Midland Public Schools career as a paraprofessional at Midland High School in 1997. In 1998, Mary joined the Office Technical Professional ranks as the Midland High School Switchboard Receptionist. In 2001, Mary was appointed as the Office Technical Professional in the Counseling Center at Midland High. In 2005, Mary was promoted to the Office of Technical Professional position in the Coordinator's Wing, working with Math and Social Studies Coordinators. Excuse me. In 2014, with the reorganization of the Curriculum Office, Ms. Shilton's position was reclassified into the MPS Manager's ranks to State Testing and Assessment Specialists. In her current position, Ms. Shilton coordinates all MDA mandated summative assessments, manages internal data systems, and creates data profiles as requested for internal usage and external reporting. Supervisors of Ms. Shilton have commented, Mary routinely meets deadlines when given specific tasks to accomplish. She often does this with disregard for personal time, as the recent legislative changes have mandated many unforeseen metrics and tasks. She completes work with fidelity consistently ahead of the expected deadlines. Mary was nominated for the Shining Star Award by an MPS colleague. Here are some of his comments. Mary consistently helps others and is a source of leadership when decisions need to be made. She has become a regional resource and her expertise is often sought by other school districts. Respect for her opinions and actions among colleagues is widespread. She maintains a professional demeanor and optimistic approach in the face of persistent adversity. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Can I do that? I need to stretch your relations.
Thank you, Mary.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary.
All right, congratulations to both Laura and Mary and thank you very much for all you do for children of our district. Moving on to Board of Education Matters, we have Summer Tax Collection Request. Oh, and everyone's leaving.
Sure. I get to bring all the good news always.
I say taxes, they all get up and leave.
Give them a second here, then. I can't believe it's not as exciting. It's true.
But thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Roger's still here, though.
All right, I'll get started because this is one that we commonly have to do each year. And it's really just according to the state regulations, if we want the city to collect half of our school property taxes, including our debt service, in the summer, we have to make an annual resolution before January 1st. So that's what we have in front of us, is a resolution that's asking the city to collect one half of that, only with property that's been in the city of Midland, the townships, another areas collected, all in their winter taxes. The city we're asking to split between the two. So we've done that on an annual basis. We just need to do it again at this time.
All right. I'm looking for...
I would motion to approve item 4.1, Summer Tax Collection Request.
Second.
All right. All right, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes. Next. Request to address the board. I don't think we've received any, have we? Okay, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
All three of you have a chance.
Anyone, anyone?
Dang.
No, okay. Moving on then, Administrative Services. Study Committee Chair Scott McFarland. Did you have a meeting? Yes, you have minutes.
I do, but Patrick was filling in for me, so he's going to read them tonight.
Okay, excellent, Patrick.
At the November 16th meeting, Board of Education meeting, Mr. Sharo will bring for action to the Board of Education policy changes to a number of Midland Public Schools policies, as recommended by Neola in our Fall 2015 updates. Neola retains law firms to provide legal reviews of published materials and consults on policy updates in the spring and fall of each year. Therefore, the legal accuracy and compliance proposed provisions can be unequivocally guaranteed. Mr. Sharo discussed proposed policy changes with Administrative Services Committee members as follows. One, policies related to weapons, specifically numbers 1217, 3217, 5772, 7217, and 8400. And number two, policies related at field trips, specifically 2340 and 2340C. Policies presented for updates at tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Item 6.2 for action. Do you want to say anything on it or do you just want me to?
No, as we said, you know, there's quarterly updates and we'll get those on a regular basis. We'll review them in committee when needed.
Right.
There was a couple there I thought that we should review, a couple of hot topics, you know, going on right now with waiting for our legislators to act on some of those weapon-type issues in schools. And so, good policies set to go. And there was quite a few on financial pieces in there. Pam's familiar with those and so I think we're ready to approve those and make the changes.
Okay.
All right, this time I'm looking for a motion, then.
I'll move approval of Agenda Item 6.2. Neola Fall 2015 Policy Revisions.
All right.
Support.
Moved by Yvonne, supported by Pam. The Neola Fall 2015 Policy Revisions. Is there any discussion?
You know, all the policies, there was a stack of them, so it was a lot to go through. But I'm appreciative of having Neola to rely on, to give us good information, legal insight on all the new legislation that comes out and how we can react to it and the choices we have. And the choices that we did make were all for the safety of the kids, so I feel real confident in all of those policies.
Excellent. Any other comments? Yes, they're quite the manuals. There's like two of them this big. A few years ago, we went through them page by page. Remember that, Cindy? Yes. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes. Moving on, Item 7, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Lynn?
Yes, we met at Midland High on October 19th and the committee and Scott Cochran and Jeff Jaster also joined us. And we started with a CTE update and a welding program tour. Scott Cochran presented general information on the status of the MPS Career and Technical Education Programs. After general discussion, specific information was provided on the welding program. Course enrollments in welding have expanded to six sections for the 2015-16 school year. The informational session was followed by a tour of the welding facilities and it was led by instructor Cory Pollak and student Cody Heckman. Next, we talked about the music program and had a tour and update. Following the tour of the welding facilities, the group visited the orchestra, band, and choir rooms. The tour was followed up with a question and answer session facilitated by Mr. Cochran. Updates on enrollment numbers, elementary scheduling, and plans for staff feedback on the new auditorium design were discussed. And as always, we had a great meeting and our visit to the welding program was amazing to see what these students have accomplished and the awards they have won and just the enthusiasm and the excitement of the students in that program. And of course, it's always fun to go see our beautiful music room. So we will be meeting again on November 23rd.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I remember a couple of years ago, they came in and showed projects, the welding classes. They were amazing and they were talking about the programs they have. And I went back to work and I was like, oh my gosh, because we need people who know welding where I work, because we have welders. So it was a great connection. Yes, there are jobs out there. All right, moving on to Item 8, which is FFO. Pam?
Okay, I have the minutes here from November 9th. The members present were myself, Patrick Frazee, Gerald Wasserman, Mr. Sharo, and Mr. Cooper. We had guests present, Darrell Dunbrow from Barton Mallow and Dale Jerome from French and Associates. and Associates. Mr. Cooper reviewed the following three items to be acted on at the November 16th Board of Education meeting. One was a summer tax collection request to the city to collect half the school's annual tax levy, including debt services during the summer tax collection. The second was the purchase of the district's property and casualty insurance from Yider Insurance Group for a total cost of $238,098, a savings of $24,302 from last year. The third item was an amendment to the cafeteria plan to allow for health savings contributions. There was a bond update. Mr. Jerome from French Associates reviewed the current plans with the latest alterations from the STEM Elementary School. Mr. Dunbrow from Barton Mallow reviewed current bond projects and the award recommendation for the building demolition work at Central Middle School. Cost estimates for the STEM Elementary were discussed, and our next FFO meeting will be December 7th.
Excellent, thank you very much. Next, Item 8.2.
8.2 is for information. We have 12 gifts tonight, totaling $9,591.61. You'll see they range from Media Center Books at Seibert, some Thanksgiving dinners at JCC. We had art supplies at Woodcrest, some music at Dow High, and there's various sports ones here, a couple for the girls' swim team, and one for girls' volleyball. And this one tonight for the American Chemical Society, we had three different $500 gifts to different chemistry, science teachers for different programs across the district. So like always, we're very appreciative of all the gifts that we received there. Under 8.3, this is for action. It's our property and casualty insurance, which we just mentioned in the FFO meeting. It is Yider Insurance Group. The coverages are the same as they were in previous years. The premium for the annual premium, excuse me, is $238,098, and that is down about $24,300 from the previous year, somewhat due to slight reduction in bus fleet and also because of the properties that we will no longer have to insure with buildings on them. And so that makes a slight difference in that. So that was the offset from there. And what we need for action here is for you to approve that coverage for that cost.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve Item 8.3, the property and casualty insurance. Support.
All right, moved by Pam, supported by Lynn. Is there any discussion?
Is this a policy package that's bid out annually, or is it? I keep seeing IWO to come up, and I never hear anything about other competitions.
It's not bid out annually. It's bid out at different times. There's no mandated time. One of the reasons that we didn't bid this year is because of our, especially with the bond, the changing situation we were going to be in insurance-wise in a very short period of time. The timing wasn't very good to bid out and be fair to people who are bidding because of what was changing, so we stuck with them. But there's no set time period. We're looking ahead to say, when are we going to be stable to sit there and say, let's put this out for bid, and it's not a fair, I wouldn't understand where we're at and which buildings we have and don't have, and all those things. So we do try to.
Next year may be an opportunity, but then the following fall, we're adding the new elementary school in as well, and then eventually at the end of the bond, then we're going to decrease a few more buildings again. So somewhere in between, we'll definitely build, bid out again.
Okay. Nice to see some of the supplementary things that are effective reducing the number of buildings we have.
Yes.
Yeah, you see bonuses everywhere. We're turning around now. It's great. Cost savings everywhere.
Yep.
All right. All those, is there any more discussion? Or take a vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes.
Okay, then 8.4. This one's a little different. It took a little bit of research when it first came up too, because we don't do this very often. So this is technically the Second Amendment to our restated Midland Public Schools cafeteria plan. And what the cafeteria plan really allows to do is to the medical plans that we're on allows employees to contribute pre-tax dollars to, just depends on which one we're trying to approve. And since the medical plan's changing to an HSA, we had to have that added into the plan so that they would be able to do that. And so it was a matter of really two things, getting that HSA in there, also removing the old medical FSA, which you can't have both at the same time. And then also, we had the attorney at that time read it over, because as you know, a lot of this is for the IRS, and you want to make sure that you stay current. I think the last time that the cafeteria plan was amended was like 2010. So we had them go through the plan just to make sure we were good every place else. And so this is really allowing employees to contribute to their HSA pre-tax dollars. And it has to be there, so we need actually for you to authorize the superintendent to sign that into our plan.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. So move.
So the motion is to authorize Mike to sign?
Yep.
That's into, into what?
It's into our cafeteria plan.
Into our cafeteria plan.
It's not something that's a resolution that goes out to anybody. It is a document that we keep then for our purposes.
Just so we're clear for our own record, make the motion. I guess I'll make it since I asked the question. I'll move under 8.4 to authorize Mike to sign this document into our cafeteria plan.
Support.
Wait, was that you, Pam? I wasn't looking up. So, okay, moved by Scott, supported by Pam. Is there any discussion? All right. HSA's, I think a lot of us have held those for a long time.
Take the vote.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
So, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Human Resources. I think, was there a meeting?
No meeting.
No, okay.
So we have two staff members who have passed away we'd like to recognize in their honor tonight. The first is Ms. Bett Ann Howe, who passed away on November 3rd, 2015. She was paraprofessional with first graders at Seibert Elementary for 28 years, retiring in 2002. And the second is Mr. Thomas Somkowsky, who passed away on October 29th, 2015. Mr. Somkowsky taught elementary physical education in 5th grade at Longview, started the special education program at Midland High, taught special education at Central, taught history and driver's education at Dow and Midland High. Was named outstanding secondary educator in 1973, and was a Gerstecker Teacher Award recipient in 1965. Mr. Somkowsky taught at Midland Public Schools for 30 years, retiring in 1985. Quite a career.
Thoughts go out to their families.
Yeah. Item 9.2, we have a retirement. Mr. Terry Gayskill, trades mechanic in the maintenance department, announced his retirement effective February 15th, 2016. And under 9.3, we need you to take action to, correct, action? Yes, no? I think we better be safe. We'll take action to approve the Midland City Education Association leasing Mr. Jerome Lombardo, as he has become president of MCA for the 2015-16 school year. Let's go ahead and take a vote to make sure we cover that one.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion first.
I move we approve Agenda Item 9.3 to contract lease for Mr. Jerome Lombardo, president of the MCA for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
All right, moved by Yvonne, supported by Patrick. Is there any discussion? This is in response to Vai's retirement.
Correct.
Transition. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Passes. Item 10 in your agenda is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 11 is the scheduled activities for information. Our next meeting's December 14th, and then the meetings after that are alternative. Now we will move into study discussion session. The first item on the agenda is the Board of Education Officers Nominating Committee. And every year at this time, we, from our board, elect three members of the board to get together and come up with the slate for next year, for the 2016 calendar year. Do you have the slips of paper? No. Oh, okay, thanks. So what we do is everyone just gets a piece of paper, write down the three members of the board who you would like to represent us to come up with the slate of officers and also committee positions. And then these are actually voted on at our first meeting in January. Is there any questions?
If you can fill them out, Cindy will tally them.
Yes, Cindy will tally them, just when, yep, I saw that, so. Oh, I got two. Do I get to vote twice? When you're done, just put them up here, and Cindy can...
Oh, throwing it on the floor.
Cindy, I dropped mine, Cindy, I'm sorry.
No, it didn't hit the floor.
Oh, you can have it.
All right, thank you very much, Cindy.
No hanging chads on that.
Wish I had, like, no. So, all right, at this time, we will hear from all our board members. Scott, I will start with you tonight.
Okay. Just to congratulate the Carpenter group again that was here, like I said, I thought they were fantastic. It's kind of a crazy day for me, and it was nice to come in tonight and to see those kids. It really brought a smile to my face. That stuff aside, we were at the, I was at the MASB conference up in Traverse City, and I was able to attend a couple of classes. First one was avoiding fiscal distress, which is kind of a snoozer, to be honest. And it was really geared more toward districts that are really, really in financial trouble, and I think we're doing a really good job navigating that pitfall. So not much to talk about there. The cool one that I really liked was school district safety and security, and I thought it was really interesting only because I didn't really have a good grip on protocols that we have here, and obviously not the forum to have that discussion on our protocols, but maybe during a committee meeting or something, or Mike, maybe we can discuss it. Really sweeping generalization, you know, what would we do if we woke up one morning and Dow High was gone, either by terrorist attack or tornado or whatever? What do we do as a board? It wasn't more what does the administration do, but how do we react with the public? How do we react with the community? What decisions do we have to make and get the ball rolling and things like that? So that was cool. There was a big discussion about school board safety. They played a video of an actual school board shooting that took place in Florida. First time I saw that video and heard about it, and it was kind of riveting to sit there and watch it all play out, and you could hear the conversation between the shooter and the board members and the superintendent. So they talked a lot about that. They talked about just different scenarios that go on in schools, active shooter situations and things like that. So that was, I thought, very enlightening, and I'm going to give this...
Just a brief comment on that one without getting too far.
Sure.
As a county, in Saginaw County as well, participates, it's actually four counties, and I don't remember all the counties he represents. We have a gentleman, Tom Meinsberg, former Longford.
I know Tom, yep.
So we use Tom for our protocols, and we do have protocols in place, but Tom is coming in to retrain our administrators and our entire teaching staff on the February PD date that we have. And so we're trying to stay as current as we can with everything we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, it was neat, and I'm not being critical at all. I'm just, just things that you don't think about, like plants in front of a window by the office, your vision's blocked on who's approaching, putting lamination on glass to prevent somebody from smashing it or at least giving you time to react, stuff like that. So I thought that was a really, really great class, and I really took a lot out of it. And I'm going to give this to Cindy to copy, and you guys can certainly have a copy of it, but good information there. So that's really all I had tonight.
Thank you. Patrick.
All right, I wanted to again thank the Carpenter students who are here. Every meeting has been just something to be so proud of, to hear from different schools, and tonight was no different. Wonderful to hear their enthusiasm, their voices and their speeches. It's contagious, could hear kids that young that happy to be at school. That definitely leads to long-term success, you got to think. I too went sometime at the conference last month. I didn't go much to security, I went to more of the STEM presentations, which intrigued me. Kind of like Scott, I had one that was not so great and one that I enjoyed. Got me really excited what we're doing here. I know, we're not quite ready for what they're talking in that classroom yet, but hearing what they're saying makes me really confident that Mike's got us on the right track and that we're doing the right things. It's, I heard a speaker, I think afterwards Lynn and Pam and myself talked, and it was, it would be odd, some of the same, what's the word here I'm looking for? Some of the same, we're both all happy hearing what was going on and the same enthusiasm. It's nice to see maybe some potential speakers down around that we'd heard, that would be wonderful for maybe groundbreaking once we get to school, ready to go, closer to go. Other than that, I don't think I have too much else new for tonight.
All right, thank you. Lynn.
Well, echo, being at the school board conference was, it's always a great opportunity, and just for the four of us to enjoy getting together and discussing what we, you know, what we learn up over there, but also you meet so many other people from all over the state, and you realize that we all have the same kinds of problems, but yet we have some different ones as well, and get some of those ideas. So you come back re-energized, or at least I did, and I realized what a great district it is to be in Midland compared to some of the challenges that some other districts have. So, and I attended a couple different ones of the speakers in the clinics, and one was on board self-evaluation, and it might be well worth us talking about that. They were talking about the changeover in board members. They're expecting a thousand board members to change over next year, and just talking about as things are changing in the schools, that it's a good thing to look into. One that I went to on, was a clinic, just a shorter session, was put on by one of the school districts, and it was talking about elementary schools. This elementary school has a lunchtime club in it on coding and programming. Fascinating to listen to what first graders are doing all the way up to 5th grade, and they're doing this at lunchtime, and these kids are programming, and they gave the names of a couple of the free programs they're using. So I said, I left there, and I said, that is a challenge to me. I'm going to try to do it. If first graders can do it, maybe I can do it. So I have yet to try it, but anyway, that is one of my goals. And then just, I'd like to congratulate Laura Wallanen and Mary Chilton again. I'm really feeling my age because Laura graduated with my kiddos, and now to see her receiving an award as a wonderful teacher in our district just kind of puts things in a perspective that I don't necessarily want to admit. And I remember when Mary Chilton was working back in the counseling department when my oldest kids were there. So congratulations to them, and then just a lot of other congratulations. Chestnut Hill, those of us that are proud Chipmunk parents, we've been very excited with their Blue Ribbon School Award, and it's just very exciting for all of us to be able to share on that. And I went to see Midland High perform To Kill a Mockingbird, and as usual, I am always amazed at the talent of our students. And of course, there's all the Dow High football excitement, and I know it didn't turn out exactly the way they wanted, but kudos to them. How exciting to get that far, that far along in the playoffs. And I believe the swim team did well, and volleyball, all those fall sports are winding down, and they have a lot to be proud of as do their bands and all their other groups that support them. And last of all, Happy Thanksgiving. I'm sure everybody's ready for some downtime with family and friends.
Thank you. Yvonne.
Well, I just want to echo what Lynn said about Chestnut Hill. I always knew Chestnut Hill was special. I knew that. It was one of the first days I walked in there. But I also want to say congratulations to everybody at Chestnut Hill, and I also want to say that I'm very, very happy that my daughters have the good fortune to begin their formal education there. I think it has served them well all these years. And then also, these students from Carpenter that were here tonight and the teachers just overwhelmed me. I was on the verge of tears for a minute there, but I was able to overcome it. I just think it's so amazing. I read the Gong where every day, and so I see all these complaints that people have about their schools and their teachers and so on, and I think we're so fortunate. We have, I believe we have the most dedicated professionals in our schools that you could find anywhere. I just, I knew that the first day I walked into Chestnut Hill too. So I just thank them for coming tonight, and what they're doing at Carpenter is so amazing to me because children don't learn... amazing to me because children don't learn to be caring, thinking adults, or children, and then go on to be, to lose those things as they grow older. They are children who will grow up to be caring adults as well, and I think that is just so awesome. I just, just the values that are being instilled in them right now. They talked about, you know, caring and communicating, being risk takers and being principled, action takers. It's just overwhelming, I think. But anyway, thank you so much to everybody at Carpenter for just how dedicated you are to your jobs and to your students and to MPS. And Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Hope you all have a nice holiday.
Very good. I'll go with that. Midland High has Rhapsody on Friday. I'm looking forward to that. And one thing that caught my eye was Dow High had a group of students who were able to raise money for clean water coolers and replacement water for the Flint School District, for elementary school there. And I just was real touched with how the group of students really reached out to another district and another community to show support. Also, there's a proposal in the legislature right now about the Detroit Public School and the debt there, and I'm watching that and interested to see what happens. It looks like the obligation of that debt could fall on all the Michigan school districts and for Midland Public, it could be as much as $50 per student, which would be about $387,500 if you look at student counts. And that's about 46.
Time's 10 years.
Every year for a decade. So, something to keep watching and see what happens. It is kind of scary to look forward and think of all the schools that could have debt, and then will this be the schools that aren't in debt? Responsibility to pull them out, I don't know where that's going to go. So, it's a little scary. Definitely want to keep our eye on it and give your two cents to the, your senators and your representatives. Thoughts and prayers with the families in France and the anxiety that that creates with all the school kiddos in that area as well. Kudos for the U.S. News Best High Schools. Dow and Midland High were both in the top 60 high schools out of, let's see, 29,070 public high schools. So, pretty exciting news there. And the last thing that caught my eye was poetry off the page, the Arts Integration Workshop that happened here last month with 26 of our teachers that were involved in bringing arts into the classroom and using it as a teaching tool. So, I was excited to see all the faces in the crowd from Midland Public Schools, and I think that's, our students are going to be the benefactors of that. Happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, well, I missed the last board meeting because of the Midland Dow Girls Swim Meet, which was fabulous. So, they, I don't know how long they've been doing this, but it was senior night for both high schools, which, you know, I don't know for as many people, but given where I live, we know kids on both teams, and it was very nice. The girls all got together, they sang the National Anthem together, they both had their senior nights. It was a fabulous night, so I hated to miss the board meeting, but definitely I was, you know, at another MPS activity. Another thing, someone mentioned Dow High's football program. I got to tell you, last, it was two Friday nights ago, I was driving home from work, and I work in Saginaw, and I was on U.S. 10, and I was passed by nine Midland Public School buses going the other direction. And it was really neat, I got to say, to see nine Midland Public School buses to haul all 250 Dow High band members, plus one of the buses. The ninth bus was a Spirit Bus for kids who wanted to go to the game to be in the buses, and it just, I thought it was very neat to see how many people actually went down to Fountain for the game. It was great. Let's see, over the weekend, I drove out to Mills and saw what isn't there anymore. So, it was nice to see. Step one of our demolition. Step two begins the 20th. I can't remember if it was Parkdale or Cook next.
Parkdale.
Parkdale.
The fence is up there, and you'll probably start seeing the next couple of days some action over there.
All right. And then the last thing, I want to send a big shout-out tonight. My oldest is a senior, and we just went through all the college application stuff, and I don't think that I appreciated up until now what the counselors do and what all the teachers do. The letters of recommendation that are required and the amount of, you know, input that the counselors have to give. And, you know, I heard a story that the counselors, I mean, they checked, they actually called one family because their child had not, as far as the counseling center knew, applied yet to college, and they wanted to make sure that this family was aware, and just really want to thank all of them so much for all the extra that they put in to, you know, help this final step of these kids' MPS education, which is getting them set to go on to the next step. So, I really want to thank all the counselors and all the teachers who've put in so much extra time to help all the kids complete their MPS education and get them ready for the next step. All right, the final thing. The ballots have been tallied.
Whoa, where'd you get that?
Pardon me?
Nothing. I didn't even see her come up and give it to you.
It was magic.
You must have.
Guess if I had my iPad, she could have just sent it to me. Okay, so, the three board members who will be on this slate are Jerry, Lynn, and myself. So, we will meet, I think, in the next, will it be this week sometime?
Probably. We've got some time, so, I don't know. Jerry will let us know.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Let me finish the next. That you'll be sent an interest sheet.
Yeah.
And then we ask that you just return that. The date will be on it. So, return that just with your interest on board positions and also committee positions. And then there were a few positions that aren't even part of this board, but some, you know, like the girl stacker and some of those types of positions that we also serve on. So, all right, I will turn it over to you, Mike. Thank you.
A few weeks back, the Office of Civil Rights audited our Career Technical Education Program. We were warned, we were ready for that. There was no complaints, we were just randomly chosen as they do some of the audits per year, so there's nothing going on there. It's typical that they've never done an audit and not had a finding. Typically, the findings are 12 to 15, they told us, and we had three. And we had three very minor ones. One had to do with signage, location of signage, and two other with some wording in documents that provided to them. And we provided a, you know, big old box of stuff to them to go through as well as they walked our facilities and audit the facilities out there. So, that, I would say, came out better than even we thought. I think we were sweating that there was going to be a few other issues, but there was not, and so that's a very good thing. We had two of our administrators kind of lead this charge, and so I want to give credit to Cynthia Marchese and Scott Cochran, as they kind of probably did the bulk of the work in the preparation for this. So, we did very well there. A few weeks back, we auctioned a few of our older buses. As our fleet has gotten smaller, we have need for less buses, and so typically, we auction our older buses when we're purchasing buses, and at this point, we still haven't purchased buses, and so they go to auction. We use an auctioneer. Typically, our buses end up in another country. They usually go to Latin America, overseas and get reused. So, these, we actually had a couple buses this time that were picked up by another school district, and so you can see some school districts are hurting, and they're picking up some, I think these two buses were 13 years old, so that is going on out there. So, we're fortunate that we're not in that situation to go forward. We have our final, well, I don't think it's certified by the state yet, but we have a final student count that is going to leave us approximately 100 students above our budget amount, so we can feel very good about where we stand right now in enrollment as well. Demolition projects, so Mills is at this point demoed. The plot is pretty much clean. There's some small work left to do. It's amazing to see that amount of a building removed in such a short period of time. Some sadness, you know, to see a building ever go, but it certainly, as I think Scott mentioned earlier about the insurance, typical example, when we have 19 buildings and we have no need, and we have no need in the future for them, it certainly is the right size in the district where we need it to go, as difficult as that may be. Parkdale will go next, and that probably will start this week, and so over a couple weeks, Parkdale will remove a little harder, two-floor building there, and so that'll take a little longer time, followed by Cook. And then tonight, you approved the bid on the Central Project. That one is probably the most difficult one, so you're separating some parts from a building. And in that bid, it wasn't just a bid to demo. The bid is also, when we demo, the auditorium and the adjacent areas that are staying with the auditorium will actually be open, and so they'll build the wall there. Instead of building a temporary wall, they'll actually build the wall that's going to permanently be there. So, some of those, some of that bid that you gave out tonight was also the rebuilding of that. It's also part of relocating the power, the gas there, so it can be heated going forward, and there's no sense in, again, spending money to do a temporary line. This will be the permanent line that will eventually power both the auditorium and the elementary. So, those were also part of that bid, kind of new dollars put in with the demo project, so I wanted to point that out for you as you went forward. A few weeks back, the state has given a good direction finally on the teacher evaluation and the weighting of it as we go forward. As you know, we were quite, pretty far down that process of adopting a new teacher evaluation format. The administrators have been trained, teachers have gotten a little bit of training at this point in time, ongoing training throughout the school year that is called 5D Plus, and it has created a lot of very good instruction, discussion about instruction in our district. So, so far, it's been a very good discussion. There's probably a little fear of the change, but I think everyone feared that it's a good change, and so we've had very good discussions going forward. Also, in the last few weeks, we've had M-Step data released a little bit by the state, so we got a statewide score. You saw that, and as expected, the state scores were quite low, but this is a recalibration with much higher standards and a much different test, and so it's setting that standard and with the hopes that we move while students are going forward. So, as well as, they have not released our data, but Mary Chilton and Brian and those have put together our data based on the, we've released student individual data just for ourselves, it's not for parents yet, and we can take that data and we can accurately predict our score, sometimes slightly off, but we can predict our scores, and our scores are lower than the previous MEEP test, but still as large a gap above the state as we've been in the past, if not more. And so, we may actually, and some of these tests look pretty good, the scores might be very good out there, and so there's other areas that show some weaknesses because that's what this new test was supposed to show going forward. Remember, it's the first time that these students have taken a test online as well, so there's some, I think, loss of what, demonstrating what actually what they know based on just that online, getting used to that online piece as we go forward as well. More of that will be released soon, and Brian will have lots of that information for you. Most recently, also, the ACT results for our juniors was released, and we're happy to report that we've got our highest score ever, so we equal our highest score ever in this district. And that score that we equal was a time where only your best took the ACT. So, those college-bound students who chose to take the ACT, which was like a 30% of your population, took it, and now we have to test 100% of kids, special education students included, and we have equaled that best with an improvement, and I'm going to lose a number here, Brian, 23.0. So, quite good. State average is 99, and so you can see we're well above that, and that's a large gap, if you know the ACT world of scoring, so very good there as well. Wrote to you a little bit about teacher recruitment, so there truly is, who would have thought we'd say this a few years back, but there's a teacher shortage out there in certain designated areas, math, science, special education, CTE, those type of areas. We're having some difficult times already filling some of those positions. And if you recall, in our last collective bargaining agreement, there will be an early retirement incentive, and we're expecting 25 or more teachers to retire this spring. And so, we will need to get very aggressive to get the quality of teachers that we want. So, our HR department's already busy working on that, from what job fairs will go to, to what our recruiting materials will look like to make sure we're really able to draw the top candidates to Midland Public Schools and fill those positions. I wrote to you a little bit about pre-Labor Day start, and so if you remember, Dr. Grandal, about 10 years ago, with the push from the business members in our state, it became a start after Labor Day. There's been some exceptions granted throughout the state in the last few years, and it has to do with if you're involved in an early college program or CTE programs that work with college programs because their calendar's different than ours, and so when those two don't line up, students are losing learning days involved in that calendar. And so, our county's looking at applying for that waiver, but essentially, what it would mean, we would start one week earlier, four-day difference, we'd still have the Friday before Labor Day off, but that would get you out four days earlier in the spring as well and not lose instructional days aligned up in that calendar. Yet to be seen what will occur, but we're in the process of applying for that. The teacher association seems to be on board. We've had initial discussions about it, and so we'll see if that waiver goes through or not. I think a lot of people would look forward to that if it does go through. Talked about a county-wide CTE program as well. Presently, in our county, we do allow students to attend other CTE programs, but it's very unusual that anyone takes that opportunity to do so. And it's really about some barriers that we have in place preventing that from happening, from transportation to how we advertise and recruit them. So, the four local districts have looked at that again, and we've done some work where we believe we're going to become much more county-wide now that we offer over 90% of the programs. This very much involves Midland Public Schools, and we have taken a look at the number of seats and capacity we have in our CTE program. So, we have capacity to allow enough seats for the other three to be in our programs without having any issues with our kids, except for welding. And so, welding's that capacity because, mainly because of space to do so. But the other three then will take advantage of the Greater Michigan Construction Academy program where they have welding now as well, so they'll be able to pick up that piece of it. This also would allow some of our kids to go to programs that we don't have. There's not many of those, but for, I gave you the example of Coleman's Ag Science Program, great program. Right now, our kids, we've had one each year in the program, but it's really that barrier of travel, and so we're working on a travel agreement where one bus would start at the end, one end of Saginaw, one would start on the other end of Saginaw, and we could, would move these kids along, working with each other. So, we're going to try to move that barrier to make those type of things happen. It would also prevent us, this would help us assist not sending our kids out of county because right now, some of us send kids to Bay Aronnac Trade Center, Coleman sends some to Claire Gladwin. We could house those within our own district. Most likely, it's a financial gain for us, as we would probably gain more membership than those receiving, because we offer more programs as well. So, I see it as a win-win for Midland Public Schools in participating, and a win-win for our county. I mean, this is about our kid, the kids in the county getting the best education they can. Northwood University contacted me again about that property we've been talking about in the back of Dow High School. Dr. Priti is looking at having a purchase agreement signed up and leaving the dollar amount blank, as we haven't fully agreed to that. We talked about the Dollar Mountain appraisal in the FFO committee, appraisal that he had, and we thought it was a little low, and so we've asked for a larger amount, and I do think we'll meet, reach agreement very close, and so he felt the same. So, I think that's going to move forward, and very possible you could see that on the December agenda, and we'll do it, we have a December FFO meeting, we'll talk about that there as well. So, I'm expecting him to be able to make that timeline. If not, that delays will be January. If you recall, when Blake Sobar, Technology Director, left last spring, we moved Dave Dietzick into that position as an interim, and Dave has performed very well, and so we feel very comfortable to removing that interim title, so congratulations to Dave. Our STEM Elementary School, as you know, was designed with all the bells and whistles that everyone wanted, and we were significantly over budget, which is not unusual. And then it goes back to the drawing board for some changes, and so we've made several changes to it without losing, I believe, anything that anyone even would notice. But to the architect, it's quite painful because, you know, our architects are designing a beautiful building, and so we've reduced that to a small enough amount that we felt comfortable going ahead and bidding this because we expect bid savings, you always do. The estimators know their job, they build you in the worst-case scenario, and we would expect bid savings going through. We're pretty comfortable to say that we'll get bid savings, but we'll still probably end up a little bit over budget. And so, we took a look in our FFO committee, what would that mean? You know, what, just to give them examples, what would that mean if we were over budget there? Would we have to skinny other things? And it doesn't look too painful to do that. We hope to not have to do some of those things. What I know about having handled the bond before, by the time you get to the very end of it, generally, you've significantly came under enough times, a little bit here, a little bit there, that you're generally able to put those things back into the bond. Now, we're not going to get Bart and Al in French to guarantee that or say that because that's their job to go the other way. So, we feel comfortable moving forward at this point anyway, knowing that we've got a little bit of work to do on the budget and design. And I think- And I think now that we've given the okay, we've had architectural drawings, which would do nothing for the public really to see what an architectural drawing of the school is. We're going to get artist drawings soon, and we'll be able, at that point, we have a STEM strategic plan that Brian and I have proposed to our foundations in several spots. At that point, we'll know if we have our foundation's support, and we'll present to the public at a board meeting our STEM strategic plan and the artistic drawing of our school. I'm kind of hoping that could be December, but it's probably going to be after the first year is my guess, is we'll present that to everybody in the public, and Roger helped us get that word out. So we're about ready to present, open that all to the public as we go forward. And remember that not only do we have reps to rendezvous on Friday, but we also have the Santa Parade. If any of you guys would like to join my wife and I in walking the Santa Parade this year, please do so on Saturday. So that is all I have for you.
Thank you very much. So yeah, once we get those drawings out of the new elementary school, everyone, I think, will be as excited as some of us who have been seeing them develop art. It's going to be a great, great, great school. All right, is there anything else? All right, with that, we end the meeting. Thank you all very much.